It is 5:01 and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. A roll call please.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
This is the time when for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. However, I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council. Therefore, request and declaration of closed session items by City Attorney.
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We have seven closed session items this evening. Items A and B are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The case name is the SEC versus City of Victorville and the case number is set forth on the agenda. Item A is on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item B on behalf of the City Council. We have a number of anticipated litigation items. Items C and F are both anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to government code 54956.9E1. With respect to both these items, the facts and circumstances need not be disclosed at this time. Each is one potential case. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 subsection E3. The facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. It pertains to correspondence received by Mr. Robert Conaway. Item E is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property location, there is a slight revision to the agenda. The property location is 22131 Pahaton, I think it's Pahaton Road, Apple Valley, 92308. And negotiating parties are Mr. Robertson and the Apple Valley Animal Shelter. Item F we covered already. Item G is also anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to government code 54956.9E2. It pertains to a rent dispute arising from a lease transaction between the city and Lamar Companies. To the center's reportable action, we will put the action at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. One, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. At this time, may we have a closed session announcement by City Attorney please?
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We had seven items, closed session items this evening. Items A and B are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item A on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item B on behalf of the City Council. No reportable action with respect to that item. Two items of anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Those are items C and F and pursuant to government code 54956.9E1. The facts and circumstances need not be disclosed at this time. No reportable action with respect to either one of those items. Item D, again, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. The facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda with respect to that item. No reportable action with respect to that item. Item E, real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The real property location actually was 22131 Pahaton Road, Apple Valley, 92308. The negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. No reportable action with respect to that item. The last item is item G, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. A dispute between, a lease dispute between the city and Lamar Companies. There is a reportable action with respect to that item. Councilmember McEckern recused himself from a discussion because of, to avoid any potential conflicts. The council voted unanimously with the rest of the other four members for O to enter into a settlement agreement with Lamar to settle the dispute as two rent arrears amounts. And the settlement amount is $15,000. So there is a copy. They have signed the settlement agreement. We will be executing the settlement agreement for $15,000 to resolve that rent dispute.
Thank you. We will now have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Minister Dominic Garcia of Victory Christian Center and the allegiance will be led by Police Chiefs and Lucia. Please stand.
Good afternoon Mayor and Councilmembers. Let's pray. Father God, I thank you right now for this opportunity to pray for our city. We thank you for the city of Victorville Lord and I thank you for all these council members and our mayor. I declare, Father, that they seek you and that you give them wisdom beyond their age and ability, Father, to make the right decisions for our city. Declare that they're blessed and overcoming in all that they do and we thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I will come down for the first two. The first one will be presentation proclaiming April 2016 as DMV Donate Life California Month. The second one will be presentation proclaiming April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and I will come down for those two. And the third one will be presentation of the New Fire Engine by Chief Dan Muncy. Well, Davida and Victor Villalobos, ambassadors for One Legacy, please join me.
I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation proclaiming April as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Victorville. We encourage all Californians to help save a life and check yes when applying for or renewing the driver's license or ID card with the DMV. Thank you for your work to save lives in California. Thank you both very much. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much.
And I have this proclamation that I will present to you. Like to say something please?
I just want to thank you for making a public announcement, you and the council members, supporting life. I am a kidney recipient. If it wasn't for the gentleman who put that dot on his license, I would not be standing here today. And, you know, life's a gift. It's a gift. And I just want to say thank you once again.
Thank you so very much. I think we don't quite appreciate, but when you're a recipient, of course, you know, you really thank the person that actually provided the organ for whichever you needed. And it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. We thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. And now I'd like to invite Stacy Iverson, President and CEO of Children's Fund to join me please. Stacy, I'm honored to present the Child Abuse Prevention Council. This proclamation from the Victorville City Council proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Victorville. We encourage all citizens to help prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional and developmental needs. Thank you for your efforts to protect our children. Thank you so very much for everything you do. And I do have a proclamation that I will present to you. Would you like to say something please?
Thank you so much for this opportunity and for being part of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. This is a cause that all of you I know have a heart for. We all need to protect our children. They are not only our most vulnerable citizens, but they're also our future. And so it's wonderful to be here today and to be able to continue to raise awareness about the importance of our children and to serve as the eyes and ears for these kids. In Victorville, so just to give a tiny bit of context, last year there were 32,000 reports or referrals of child abuse in the county. And I'm a Victorville resident, so this was the startling part for me. Thirty-one hundred of them were from Victorville. That's like nearly 10%. That's startling and way too high. So we currently have 5,000 children in care and all of them, as you know, deserve a bright future and deserve everything that they need to succeed. And so that's what part of this effort is about. And also just quickly from a resource perspective, serving as the eyes and ears of our children, if any suspected abuse is ever witnessed, it's a simple call to 211 to report that abuse, to serve as their protector. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And you did say 211?
211.
Good, very good. And here's a proclamation that I present to you on behalf of the City of Victorville and the City Council.
I have to say my firm has a longstanding relationship with Children's Fund and we are so fortunate to have them and all that they do throughout the county of San Bernardino. Hope you don't mind, I've asked Mayor Garcia to stand with us. She makes us look good. I'm Dan Muncy, your fire chief, and I'd like to introduce a couple of people. I'm going to ask Fire Chief Warren Peterson to join me. Warren started in the City of Victorville in 1979 and worked until 2014, most of that time in the city. Also I'd like to ask Battalion Chief Tim Porter. And the well-dressed gentleman in the back is a very respected member of our labor union. He's Vice President Jeremy Kern. I'll ask him to join me. Today out front, we have a brand-new fire engine that was received under grant. Chief Peterson got this fire engine. Now, when he told me that he wrote a grant for a fire engine, I kind of thought to myself that's a waste of time because agencies never get fire engines under grants. Very, very rare. But Warren made it happen and I learned a lesson. The way he did it is he went back east when he was at the National Fire Academy and he visited FEMA's office and he talked to him and he said, "I'm from the City of Victorville. The City of Victorville through this recession has taken extraordinary measures to ensure that their public safety is never cut. They've cut the city, the city staff, they've cut services, but they've always maintained their fire and police. Is there anything we can do? We really have an aging fleet of apparatus. They cannot afford to purchase any apparatus." And he kept making this case over and over. Lo and behold, that grant was approved for $584,000, I believe, with just a 10% match to the city. This fire apparatus that you're seeing is 500 horsepower Cummins diesel, has a 1,500 GPM pump. It is fully equipped with modern-day fire apparatus. When we receive a fire engine like this, we expect it to be in service about 20 years to be serving our engine. On the front of one of these pictures, you're going to see Old Town. It's proudly serving the Old Town Victorville area at a fire station 311. Another one of those pictures, you'll see a truck next to it with the ladder. Trucks have the ladder on top. It's a dual station that runs more calls than anybody else in San Bernardino County. About 7,200 calls per year. Warren, thank you very much for this fire engine and your dedication to the city. I know I've thanked you publicly before. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you Dan. I wasn't expecting this. I just want to, I would like to extend my thanks to the citizens of Victorville for the ability to have had a wonderful career here. I'm loving Washington State where life's green and I don't have to pay a water bill for a lawn, but that's a whole other story. But, you know, Victorville was a very, very good city to me. I had a great time here and I would certainly like to commend the leadership, the council members then and now, for their commitment to public safety. The fact that there were no cuts to public safety during the recession with as many other folkses were laid off with the city. And I know Mayor Pro Tim Cox had a mini trying day walking down the hallways letting family members go during those days. And we maintained a fire department and that made a very good, strong selling point as I talked to the representatives from the US Fire Administration that go over the grants and was willing to kind of go to bat for my hometown and it will always be my hometown. And I'm thrilled to see the trucks sitting out front. Thanks Dan.
I'd also like Battalion Chief Tim Porter to introduce the staff that we have in the back.
I'll be introducing the captains to you and I'll ask the captains to stand up and introduce our crews. We have from 311, which the captain's actually running on a new engine right now, Captain And sitting next to him, we have Captain McClintock and his crew. They're on the OAS engine that's also sitting out in the parking lot tonight.
And from our labor organization, Vice President Jeremy Kern.
Good evening Council, Mayor Garcia and council members. On behalf of the county firefighters, we actually have a gift for you. It's just going to be a token of our appreciation, your support of public safety here in Victorville. And we would like to, guys, it's the print of your new engine downtown Victorville here, right in front of the sign. So we would like to present that to you on behalf of the county firefighters.
And if you need a place for that, my office is just, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, glad to see you down here. Yeah, yeah, I was wondering how you got him here.
This evening we do not have any appeal hearings, so we will be moving on to public hearings. And I have item B1, DEV 14-00001, a general plan amendment, zone change and specific plan to create the civic center, specific plan as set forth below. At this time, I open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? If not, I will be closing the, I close the public hearing. And do we have any council members' comments?
As much as we've all commented on this in the meetings we've had and consultation with the consultants, we haven't covered the bases. I can't imagine. Effort, I think it'll pay off and I think it'll serve us well in the future.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
I don't need to read the resolution, Mayor Garcia, but I will read the titles of the ordinances that accompany the item.
Very well.
Ordinance number 2310, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville adopting Zone Change DEV 14-00001, a change in zone to reclassify approximately 473 acres of property from C2 general commercial, C2T general commercial transitional, C2TB10 general commercial transitional with a 10-acre minimum building site, CA administrative professional offices, PC public and civic, R3T high-density residential transitional and R4 very-high-density residential to specific plan. In ordinance number 2311, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville adopting the civic center specific plan DEV 14-00001 to allow for distinct allowances, regulations and development standards unique to the project area.
Thank you. At this time, I call action to introduce and waive further reading of ordinance numbers 2310 and 2311.
Do we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What about the resolution?
There can be one action to adopt the resolution and to waive further reading and introduce the ordinances.
And also adopt the negative.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Garcia, if I just might comment as well, I just want to compliment staff. I know this has been a long process. What you all have done is quite complimentary and as well as working with planning commission and the public and the business owners in that area. I kind of echo what Mayor Pro Tim Cox just stated. I think it's a tremendous accomplishment and I applaud you for what you've done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else that wants to speak? So I'll move on to item B2, request for continuation of public hearing for ordinance number 2349 entitled, "In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, amending, updating and retitle existing Title IX Streets and Sidewalks of the Victorville Municipal Code Regarding Engineering Permits for Construction and Other Regulated Activities in the Public Right-of-Way and Finding Environmental Exemption." I open the public hearing and I do not have any cards on this item. Anyone have any comments on this item? None. I close the public hearing and this will be, this public hearing will continue.
Mayor Garcia, we're not closing the public hearing, we're going to leave it open and just continue it to the April 19th.
And then just continue, okay, then I do not close the public hearing. This will be continued until April the 19th, 2016, at a regular City Council meeting. Now we move on to B3, request for continuation of public hearing for resolution number 16-011 entitled, "Accepting the Engineering Division's Cost of Service Study and Services Effective as of July 1, 2016, contingent upon ordinance number 2349 being adopted and effective prior to that date." I open the public hearing at this time and again, I do not have any cards or anyone that wants to speak. Are there any comments from the council members?
I have one question and maybe I have missed the obvious answer, but since we are discussing fees, assuming there are different fees or new fees, I kept looking for a table of the current fee and from blank to blank. I didn't find that. Is that contained someplace in the staff report? Are all the fees going to remain the same? Are they going to be increased? How much are they going to be increased and what's the comparison to the current fees?
Mr. Brian Gangler, City Engineer, is coming down to respond to that question.
There are two different tables in there. I don't think there's a comparison table like you're talking about that shows exactly the change. That probably would be useful and we could provide that. There are only a very small number of new fees for which now we don't have a way to charge for our services. Most of the, almost all the fees are just updated to recover the cost of services because they haven't been looked at for many, many years. But we could provide that for the next meeting.
I agree that these are old and need to be redone, but I didn't know if it was a minor increase, substantial increase. And I'd been asked the question and I couldn't provide an answer.
Well, on the fees that are the plan check fees, they're not changing. On the permitting fees, they're only changing slightly. Some of the cost of service fees are changing large percentage-wise, but since they're already so small, the dollar amount isn't very large. So you'd really have to go down on each one on an individual basis, but we can provide that in a summary table. I think that'd be useful.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no action on this item. This will be continued to the April 19th, 2016, regular City Council meeting. Now we have the consent calendar. Consent calendar, items C1 through C10 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have written communications, item D1, proposed resolution number 16-009, Pierce Medical Benefits. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve resolution number 16-009 to be submitted to the CalPERS Board for the purpose of obtaining medical benefits for City of Victorville employees and retirees.
Is there any discussion and decision?
No, I just, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve and just, I would back that up with thanking staff, Bill Webb and your staff for answering the questions that we had at the previous council meeting, addressing some of the concerns that I had with respect to the rates. But based upon the staff report, I think it's very well laid out and obviously it makes sense for us to move in this direction, so I'll make the motion that we do.
One question. Bill, you're here. Is there a true Medicare supplemental plan available to retirees who have, who are on Medicare?
Personnel Officer Josie Trevino's.
I'm asking that for a couple of reasons. One of them is I'm on Medicare. One of them is I'm on Medicare. I'm on the city's plan and it's not a supplemental. It's the full Cadillac Magilla. And I don't need it. And it's costing us all, including me, a lot of money.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Josie Trevino. I'm the Human Resources Officer. And to answer your question, yes, CalPERS will be offering -- if you see in your package, there's a selection of Medicare supplemental plans that will be offered to our employees and our retirees over the age of 65. And the cost, it will be less expensive than the active prices that we currently pay.
Did you say 65?
Over 65.
Over 65.
Yes. That's Medicare age. And there will be supplemental plans in our active plan.
I had quietly said second that if it wasn't seconded, but I couldn't tell. Anyway, I had several questions. I have met with staff. I have met with the representative. All those questions that I have in regard to 125 per employee per month have been answered. And the coverage and the Medicare and the coverage for the employee and the breakdown for the employee and children, employee, spouse, employee, family. And the only thing I think is, oh, the minimum distribution, $1 for the retirees, I think we need to take up a budget, not so now. But that's a little complicated because for employees who have 25 years of service, they still get coverage from the city as a part of a post-deploy benefit plan that we have with them, which is fairly common among agencies. And this plan is going to change. We obviously offer a dollar, but I think there needs to be an explanation at the budget time, not necessarily now, that for those retirees, the premium will be reduced from the retiree's retirement check and then there'd be a reimbursement, but we need to explain the difference on paying $125. Only a part of the premium to full-time employees and the minimum of $1 to retired employees. It sounds like we have invited the employees to work for the city, said we will continue the benefits if you have 25 years, but it looks like we're reducing that by $124 a month. That's not the case, but we need to discuss it during the budget time, not necessarily now. I think staff did a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's a motion by Mr. McEckern and I don't believe there's been a second yet. Oh, Mr. Cox, okay. Mr. Cox, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, I-15.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Item D2, I-15 Reconstruction Project Agreement. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve the superseding freeway agreement between the City of Victorville and the State of California for the I-15 reconstruction project and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, approval of piggyback contract with Safeway Sign Company. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve a piggyback contract with Safeway Sign Company in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the purchase of internally illuminated street name signs, IISNS panels.
Before there's a motion, I have a question. At one time, before we had the recession and laid off so many employees, we had employees and equipment stock that made signs, handled signs, replaced signs in our shop. Does that mean that this is not the case now that it's going to be handled by a contract agent?
No, actually, those folks are still employed. In fact, when we get to budget time, we may be trying to add to them a little bit. These are strictly the -- I think it's some kind of fiberglass panels and the lighted signs on our poles. Our sign shop is for the metal signs that you see, whether it's speed limit, turn signal, stop sign, those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Have a motion here.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Cox.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Victorville Wastewater Treatment Facility Additional Appropriation for Operating Expenses. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors appropriate an additional $350,000 from Fund Number 412, the wastewater treatment facility, and amend the professional services agreement with Woodard and Curran.
Question of staff. The indication here is that the operating costs are higher than the budgeted amount. When we budget, we also set fees. All the residents pay fees to the wastewater. Is there anything in this item that's going to cause the city to address increasing those fees?
Actually, just the opposite. It's a little confusing, but our fees that we pay for wastewater that goes to the Victory Valley Water Reclamation Authority are paid through the Sanitary Enterprise Fund. The fees paid to the plant that the city owns, actually the water district owns, and the city uses are paid from a different fund. So, actually, this ultimately results in a savings to the ratepayers of sewer services. We are in the process of looking at a new rate study that will incorporate those savings and make sure that we either don't increase the rate or increase it less than we otherwise would if these flows had gone to BBWRA because we are able to treat our sewage more efficiently, more cheaply than BBWRA can. But it was just a matter of the water district needing to budget this money rather than the other way around.
Thank you.
Want to keep in mind on this too, and I think this is a -- I guess it's a question for Mr. Gangler, our city engineer. As we began diverting flows in January of 2015 and moved about a million gallons a day from BBWRA to our plant, we saved about a million dollars a year in fees that were paid to BBWRA. In a year and a half, that's about a million and a half dollars that we have not paid to them. And here, we're looking for an additional 350,000. That probably doesn't address my real question. My question is, the savings of a million and a half over the last year and a half, how much have we had to increase our costs in that plant? I'm not sure that information is readily available, but we keep saying we operate more efficiently. I'd like to see some numbers that will tell us that.
I haven't done that analysis yet. We made the diversion in February 2015, so we have about a full year of data now, but we haven't done that comparison. It would be a good comparison to make. Once we get to the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a whole fiscal year of data too to look at. But I feel fairly confident that we're operating more efficiently and less expensive, like Doug said. I just don't have the hard numbers in front of me right now.
It's my belief, but I'd like to hear -- when we have it, I'd like to hear some evidence of it.
Thank you. Okay. Do we hear a motion here?
I move approval.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, Amendment 1 to General Services Provider Agreements for Annual Supply Agreements, Hot Mix Asphalt Project ES16-057. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve Amendment Number 1 to the General Services Provider Agreements for both Blue Diamond Materials and Vulcan Materials for Annual Supply Agreement, Hot Mix Asphalt Project ES16-057, increasing the compensation of each agreement from $10,000 to an amount not to exceed $25,000 for a total aggregate increase of $30,000.
Question or motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, Southwest Gas Letter Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve a letter agreement between the city and Southwest Gas Corporation for infrastructure improvements needed to increase the service pressure to the Victorville Municipal Utility Services Natural Gas Distribution System located at Southern California Logistics Airport.
A second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, Protest of Better Award to Eco-Engineering HVAC Maintenance and Repair Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Let's the attorney to speak on this.
At this time, I'm going to recommend that we continue this item to the next meeting. Maybe help to have a motion. Yeah, I'm not prepared to provide a report at this point.
I move that this item be continued to the April 19th, 2016 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Award of Contract to All American Asphalt Inc. for the Bear Valley Road Reconstruction, Mariposa Road to Balsam Road roadway improvements. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council appropriate an additional $150,000 from Fund 250 Measure I and $820,000 from Fund 230, the local transportation fund, and award a contract to All American Asphalt Inc. for Option 1 in the bid, the sum of bid schedules A, B, and C in the amount of $2,611,215 for the Bear Valley Road, Mariposa Road to Balsam Road roadway improvements.
Madam Mayor, just a question for staff on this. I noticed that in the staff report, this doesn't include the entire length of the project that we had discussed previously where it would go from, I believe, Balsam all the way to Amargosa over the I-15. And perhaps Doug or Mr. Gangler can address exactly what's going on here.
I can give it a shot. Say, Brian, a few steps. The entire project will be built. We were attempting to get this to bid as quickly as we can and to get it started. And ultimately, we split it into two phases. The intent is to do this phase, which is from Balsam to Mariposa listed the other way, and then immediately roll into the second phase, Mariposa to Amargosa. That allowed us to bid it and get started more quickly essentially, but ultimately, by the end of summer, we should have the entire project done. Is that accurate, Brian? Uh-oh. I was close.
Then I have a follow-up question for you, Brian.
Got a caveat to that. We're waiting for a permit from Caltrans. We've gone through a couple rounds of comments because we're doing the portion in their right-of-way between the two frontage roads and --
I was trying to be friendly to Caltrans.
Might be a little bit later, depending on when we get our permit from them.
Right.
And participation from the City of Hesperia on their side of Bear Valley, I know that I had brought that up in the past. I didn't want that to hold up our project. I know it's not holding up the project, obviously, because you brought it to us tonight, but are we actively or are they actively working with us to improve their portion of Bear Valley Road?
We have, yeah. They have budgeted some money for their portion, that quarter of the interchange, and now we have better prices. We know from this project what unit costs are, so yeah, we have been working with them and they are interested in rehabilitating some of their pavement.
That, Madam Mayor, I'd move for approval of staff recommendation.
I want to second it, but I have a question. I noticed there are three lanes that you're going to rebuild. The two outside lanes are going to go from asphalt to cement. The third inside lane will be overlaid, ground out with asphalt. Since we're going to do that, and so the problem is will not hopefully be recreated, can that be posted? Trucks right to lanes only? Because I have been down the road with those trucks also in that asphalt lane. And it slows up the traffic. It's going to cause a problem again, and I'm not sure why they're there unless they're going all the way through to 395 or using it as a crosstown cutoff. But I don't think they should be in the inside lane at all, but can we address that?
That's a good suggestion. We certainly could. I don't see any reason why they would be in that lane unless they were going to be making a left turn at the next intersection, other than that.
Well, we'll try to find a truck route on the other side. Those heavy trucks are coming from an industrial area. It shouldn't be going there unless they're going home to Hesperia and they can take the trucks home. They can't in Victorville. But the problem, it needs to be looked at, if it can be addressed and can be posted. I don't know if it's even legal. Apparently, there's some question because even on the freeway, there's trucks in all three of our lanes. And traffic has been backed up, and I thought the trucks had to stay in the right lanes, but apparently, they can slow down and back up the traffic at will. I'd like to have that addressed to the attorney to see if he has any say-so at all on I-15.
We can look at that and the --
In regard to that, or can we encourage the Highway Patrol to look at that? It happens all the time. Heavy-loaded, the truck that's going 40 is a little slower than the truck going 41, and they end up with all three lanes and it's bare in front and backed up behind, and they will not go into the right lanes. We need some enforcement on that. It's really frustrating for people trying to get to work.
Certainly, we can look into that and see if it's appropriate to post the outer lanes as for trucks only.
Courtesy would go a long way.
The freeways, they're required to be in the right two lanes. You're absolutely correct there. We can certainly reach out to CHP and note it as a problem on the freeways.
Well, I see it enough, I'll start taking pictures of it because they're there.
I've seen it too.
Just don't do that while you're driving.
Oh, yeah, I'll be the one to get the ticket. Wouldn't that be nice? Okay. I'll take a passenger.
Make sure the steering wheel isn't in the photo.
The motion by Mr. McEckern, a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Award of Contract to Valley Slurry Seal International Inc. for the Brentwood Slurry Seal and Transportation Center Repaving Improvement Project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council appropriate an additional $535,242 from Fund Number 250 Measure I and $582,809 from Fund Number 230, the local transportation fund, and award a contract to Valley Slurry Seal Inc. in the amount of $1,292,777 for the Brentwood Slurry Seal and Transportation Center Repaving Improvement Project.
Have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10, Proposed Resolutions to Establish the Victorville Open Data Policy.
I have questions that is -- I have no idea what the answer is, but we have several resolutions. And in those, the City Council would direct the city manager to appoint working groups whom would be members of the community. Believe it is my personal feeling that the city manager should be responsible for appointing the staff people. It should be the City Council that would appoint the members of the community. Just a personal bias that I have. We deal with the community. It seems like to me that we ought to have retained that. I don't know if it's a right, a privilege, or a responsibility, but it seems the responsibility should go to the council when you start approving members of the community to a committee or commission of the city.
I think that makes sense.
Do we read the -- Do we read the recommendation?
Recommendation is that the City Council and the City Council, acting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and Victorville Housing Trust, respectively, adopt resolutions to establish the Victorville Open Data Policy and direct the City Manager to appoint a data governance working group that will report to the City Manager or his designee for the purpose of developing and implementing the open data practices outlined within the policy document.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, unless the City Attorney disagrees with me on this, I believe that you would have the opportunity to amend, well, not amend the motion, but amend the recommendation, if you will, or make that part of your motion, that the City Council would appoint the two members from the public or potentially more. I think it's a great idea. My hope would be that these are still approved tonight. This is the culmination of the What Works City project. And direct the attorney and myself to revise the resolutions to reflect that change, if that works.
And I would like to agree with you, because I, in reading the staff report, it seems to indicate that there's a working group, a city staff, that, from my perspective, is appropriate that you appoint. But the two members of the working public that are appointed ought to be considered by the City Council and approved by the City Council. So from that perspective, I agree with Mr. Cox, and if we can amend it to that in that way, then I would move for approval with that caveat.
That would be appropriate. The motion is to approve with caveat that the City Council will be responsible for appointing those members of the working group under each entity who are to be selected from the public.
So is there already a motion?
That was my motion. I think that, but that's in, and I can start with what you were saying.
So the motion would be to actually have the council...
That is a motion, yes.
The two...
Correct.
Just, but clarification, maybe you were going there. I don't want to have two different members of the public for each of the entities that we serve over. I think two members of the public for all the entities and the same staff for all the entities. Is that the nature of what we're looking at?
That's the nature of it. At this point, I've preliminarily identified the staff members and two members of the public as well. In fact, they've been meeting informally. They've met twice informally, so we'll bring those two public members back at the next council meeting. The intent and the reason why, well, there's two issues at play here. One, the intent for this committee and the reason why it's in front of the council for formation is so that it is without a doubt a Brown Act committee, meaning they'll be discussing and making decisions on open data policies for the city, what data becomes available, what data is most important to become available now versus later, what data is of sufficient quality that it would be useful. And we kind of were presented with several options. The two main would, that we had a question about, and many of the cities that are in the What Works City program chose to have it be a closed meeting, not because there's anything to hide, but simply out of convenience. We are recommending that it be established in this manner, even though it is a little bit inconvenient for this committee to go through the 72-hour agenda notice, go through the public process, have public comment. All those things are welcome, but it can be a bit cumbersome for a small committee like this. But the overarching desire was to be as open as possible, and the only way to do that is to make it an open committee, subject to the Brown Act. I believe that many of the other cities chose to go the other direction, so I'm proud of our staff and the committee for having that discussion and heading that way. So the other oddity to it, or the other interesting piece, I guess, is that the intent is for this to really be a working group, not, you know, something that's particularly formal, a lot of voting and whatnot. It's really to come together to study the data that we have and decide what's important, what's important to the public, and get it onto our website or some other portal as quickly, efficiently as we can, respecting any potential confidentiality, that sort of thing. So I'm proud of the work they've already done, and I think the proposed amendment to have the council approve the two, or perhaps more, public members is a great suggestion.
Are the decisions or conclusions of this group going to just be put into effect? Do they have to come back to the council for approval?
No, they do not have to come back to the council for approval. It really is more of a working group in that regard.
Anyone else?
Sure it's understood that the council would be informed, memo, if there are changes made or anything put in effect, we have to know what's going on.
Actually, we'll be letting the council know, letting the public know. That's the whole idea.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. McEckern.
Second with those changes.
Second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D eleven, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Letter Received... Item D eleven, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Letter Received Challenging the City's At-Large Election System. Recommendations?
I believe the City Manager or City Attorney is going to address the recommendation on this item.
Just briefly, Andre and I have been working together as well as consulting, consulting's too strong a word, talking with a demographer. What the ultimate conclusion is, regardless of what path we take, is that in order for the City of Victorville to have or to switch from an at-large election system to a district-based electric, election system, it would require a change of the charter, which would have to occur at a statewide election. So your first and best opportunity would be this November. The other, I guess, direction that we would be seeking, in addition to pursuing that, would also be to pursue hiring a demographer. I've spoken with one. There are others out there. They are all busy at the moment. So depending on the exact cost or potential cost of this, it may be within my purchase authority, simply to hire one after an informal bidding procedure. If it's above $25,000 in cost, then we would, of course, have to have a more formal procedure, which would come back to the council for approval. Did I miss anything, Andre?
No, that's correct. The first step, regardless, would be to look at the option of putting a ballot question on the November election with respect to whether or not the members of the public want the city to change its charter. The charter right now is prohibitive of having district-wide elections, so that's sort of a precursor before you can do anything.
Yes, so the direction we're seeking would be to pursue that, pursue the demographer as quickly as possible, because we have until August 11th to put that on to the ballot. That would, of course, come back to the City Council for public discussion and adoption of whatever that final language may be. We would get that back as quickly as we can in case there is significant discussion about the way it's laid out as presented at that time.
The only thing I would add is we would also look for a direction from the council that that would be essentially the essence of our response to Mr. Conaway, and that we send the letter to that effect.
I, I agree that we need to take whatever steps necessary. Sure that we are not in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. I think it's worthy of noting, I think, to the 31 cities plus, that this kind of an action has been brought against those cities. It's from the state law, State of California, which, which has caused this. And anytime anyone alleges that anyone in this council would take an action that would in any way interfere with the voters of the citizen, you can be assured we'll take whatever action that we have to take to ensure we are not going to violate any law or that any voter is going to be disenfranchised. So on this, move positively on this, and I know we are. Thank you.
Is there a consensus on getting that direction?
Need a motion?
You know, a motion would be helpful, and we can put that actually into the letter.
What exactly would be the motion?
Motion would be to direct staff to respond to Mr. Conaway, indicating that we will look at all of the options and pursue the consideration of an amendment to the city's charter, which would be the first step.
That would go on the ballot in November.
That's the soonest it could be there per the Elections Code at this point.
As a charter city, we have to be at a statewide election, so that's the only option. If we miss November of this year, we would have to wait two years to have the opportunity again. So it's important for us to get moving.
Mary Brown?
I will, I will some of.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D twelve, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Proposed Notice of Termination of Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, BVWRA Service Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
I believe, again, this is either City Manager or City Attorney who's going to address this item.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, since I'm the one that asked that this item be placed on the agenda, I just would like to take responsibility for it. I have expressed my dissatisfaction with the operation of BVWRA, as the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, for the past many months. You've all heard me. I won't go back through the details. I believe that the, that many of the decisions made by that board have not been in the best interest of the citizens of Victorville. As most of you know by now, the citizens of Victorville provide about 60% of the revenues, and we have 25% of the votes, and we pay for 60% of everything that happens there. And a lot of it is just not acceptable to me. So I'm going to make the motion that the City of Victorville give BVWRA our 30-year notice of our intent to withdraw from the Joint Powers Authority.
It's actually a termination of the service agreement, not the JPA at this point.
Termination of the service agreement.
Since I'm the alternate on that board, I will second that motion.
Madam Mayor, before you call for a vote, just a quick question for the attorney. I should have asked this earlier, but it's been a rather hectic day. Is it, it's been a while since I paid attention to the front page of the services agreement. Is it services agreement between the city and BVWRA, or is it the sanitary district? Or what is it exactly at this point, given that that district was dissolved?
Let's make sure the right one is what drawing, right?
I just want it reflected in the motion if it needs to be something other than the city.
I wish that was an easy answer. The agreement dates back to 1976. There have been subsequent amendments. It was originally with the sanitary district. Actually, I believe it was originally with the Mojave Water Agency. I would be, my recommendation would be that the notice go to all potential parties that are affected by the service agreement. That would incorporate all the potential amendments that have happened since then, and to all of the members of the BVWRA.
And be from the appropriate agency as determined by the City Attorney.
Absolutely.
I'll include all of that in my motion.
It would be from the City of Victorville. That would be the appropriate entity.
Just a comment. I know we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to be supportive of that, somewhat reluctantly, but obviously with good cause. You know, I think all the cities and municipalities in the high desert, as well as the county, have been working well together over the last several years, and I'd hope that we can continue to do that. But obviously, there's a great concern with this particular entity. I have tremendous confidence in Councilmember Kennedy and his representation of the City of Victorville and all of our various entities as it relates to BVWRA, as well as Mayor Pro Tim Cox, and occasionally, as the second alternate, I get to sit in on some of those meetings. But what's interesting and that cannot be disputed in the fact that Victorville pays somewhere around 67% of the costs associated with BVWRA. We are 67% of the revenue that that organization commands. It goes without saying that we should have 67% of the vote. Unfortunately, we don't. We have 25%, and for all kinds of reasons, that causes problems for us as a council, Victorville, the city, and our citizens. So as, as much as I hate to see us go down this path because I'm concerned about the consternation that it might cause amongst municipalities and/or the county, it is the right thing to do for the citizens of Victorville, so I'm very supportive of this.
Just to get the record really correct, it used to be 67%. Today, it's about 60. Six-oh.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, there's a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have an addendum to agenda, which is item D 13. And I do have a card. I'll read the, the item request for variance from the requirement to connect to the public sewer system from 16263 Figueroa Road. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the approval or denial of the request for a variance from the requirement to connect to the public sewer system for 16263 Figueroa Road be at the discretion of the City Council.
And I do have one card. David McKetty? Please come up.
Really, all I want to say is my wife and myself were retired and on a fixed income, and it'd be a financial hardship to come up with that amount of money. And also, I looked into refinancing. I can't refinance because I don't have enough equity in the house to do it. So basically, it all depends on you guys' answer, what you come up with. But if you say I got to connect, then I got to walk away from my house. That's my only other choice. Can't come up with that, that much money to do it. Basically, no other choice.
I'm sorry, I cannot answer you.
Yeah, it's just, the comment period is just for the comment, and then the council will deliberate over it.
Okay.
Once you're done.
That's all I got.
They're just, legally, there can't be a back and forth.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKetty.
Thank you.
You know, we have considered this countless times since I've been on the council, and I don't remember ever forcing somebody to go to that kind of expense. And so I'm in favor of giving the waiver. What I'm, what I'm bothered by is that our whole goal is to, is to get everybody connected to the sewer. And when situations like this come up, this is always the solution. Can't connect to the sewer. Are there any other options where we can equalize these costs in some fashion to where we can accomplish what we're trying to accomplish?
There are. There is at least one neighborhood I can recall who, as a neighborhood, got together, petitioned the council, and had a very small election in their neighborhood that connected the entire neighborhood to sewer, and it became a portion of their property taxes. If I recall right, and it was many, many years ago, I think the city shared some of the cost, may have split it, but I might be getting that confused with the sidewalk project. But it, there is another option, but it would take, you know, quite a few more residents to come in to do that. One of the things that we've talked about internally is taking a look at, you know, what is ultimately the driving cost factor? Is it that, you know, the ordinance currently says within so many feet? Should we reduce that? Would that help? Unfortunately, as staff, our job is to recommend what the municipal code says. We can't make a recommendation opposite that. That's why... That's why a few years ago, we stopped making recommendations. It really made us look bad. I think you're right. You know, almost 10 times the cost, it is unreasonable. So we'd be happy to take another look at the municipal code to see, are there options for us to change that to make these connections easier?
Well, not only that, but if this has worked in the past, if an entire neighborhood, I'm assuming Mr. Vashetti is not the only one in his neighborhood that's on sewer, I mean on septic. So I imagine there might be others who, if everybody put their heads together, might be agreeable to some kind of a solution like we've done in the past, and the city can help with that cost, we can make it pretty minimal and get everybody connected. I'd like to see us explore that anyway. Not in this case. I'm, I'll make the motion for the waiver, but going forward.
I, oh, second, I have some comments. This really seems high. And, you know, and I have to assume that the costs aren't correct. I'm just curious, out of this feat to connect to the sewer, is this a city sewer system? And how do we get $6,000, $7,000 of fire district fees in connecting to a sewer?
Are you talking about the fees charged or the actual cost?
The SBCFCD is not the San Fernando County Fire Protection District. What is it?
Flood control.
Why is the flood control getting involved with $6,000?
The complication about this particular one is this house is on the other side of a street, and the sewer line is in a San Fernando County flood control channel. And to connect to the sewer, they would have to cross the street and actually go under part of the channel to connect to the sewer main. So it'd be quite a expensive construction to accomplish that. They are within 200 feet, so it meets the requirements of our code, but it would be difficult to construct the connection and very expensive.
Yeah. There is one little sentence in here I just happened to catch my eye. No lateral lines have been connected to this existing sewer trunk line. I'm pretty sure that's why.
Well, my motion stands.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you, Brian. All for the question.
Motion is to grant the waiver.
There's a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, those are all the items that I have. I move on to public comments. And I have to remind the speakers that they are limited to the three minutes. I do have one card. Ivan Moschek.
Good evening, counsel. I'm here regarding the Hook Park. I know we have the sign of the brown is the new green, which was really an insult to me, I thought. But it looks really bad over there where they let the grass die. And I was wondering when you were going to do something about it, rock, some ice plants, something to beautify it. It really makes the neighborhood look very, very bad. I'm hoping that you will do something as quickly as possible. It's very unsightly. And again, I want to talk to you about the library. It's pitiful. It's not state-of-the-art. The books are old, they're dirty, and we need some staff there to really try to fix it since you're not going to move it. I'm really disappointed that I've been coming here for a couple of years now asking about having another library since that one is supposed to be there for the indigent people. There's other people here in Victorville that are not indigent, and we need a library that's state-of-the-art. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now reports from city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of upcoming events. Well, first off, we had our annual spring festival, Easter egg hunt, and we had over 4,000 in attendance at that, so we were very happy to see that. Carnival games, all the fun. This coming Saturday is our community cleanup event, citywide. There are 29 teams, so watch out for folks out helping beautify our city. And if you are interested, I'm sure if you came by City Hall very quickly tomorrow, we'd let you in. I don't know about t-shirts or not at this late date, but we'll take all the volunteers we can get. Also, coming up on April 23rd is our neighborhood cleanup event, otherwise known as Free Dump Day. And so that'll be a good time for us to do some additional cleanup, maybe on our own properties. T-ball opening day is April 16th, and then Kites in the Park is also on April 16th. You can find out more about those things from our community services department and our city website.
Thank you. Members?
I just wanted to let the council know I will be leaving on vacation on the 16th of April for two weeks.
Why the 16th?
It's just a, it's a good day to get out of town. Actually, the final tax day is the 18th for some silly reason. The city of Washington DC has a, some kind of a holiday on the Friday, the 15th. And for that reason, Congress moved the due date to April 18th. But the only problem is I'll miss the April 19th meeting, and unfortunately, Mr. Cox is going to have to take my place at the VVWR A meeting on the 21st.
What do you mean unfortunately?
I regret that he has to take that heat because I deserve it, but I'll get, I'll take it when I get back.
Along the April 19th meeting, I may be having an obligation, and I believe Mayor Garcia as well.
Or Mr. Cox.
Maybe. So we might have to look at that meeting. I am scheduled to possibly be in Sacramento testifying on a bill for Sandback, but I don't know that for sure at this point. I'll let you know. The other thing is, is that the basement of the IRS building in Washington DC was on fire this morning, but they assured us that we'll still get our refunds because refunds don't come out of that building, which begs the question, what do they do in that building? I'll leave that for you to answer later. I don't know. You're in the business, so I thought maybe you might know. The other thing that came up, and Brian, I'd ask you and city management to look at this, but a few years back, we looked at realignment of the Bear Valley Road off-ramp and on-ramps, both northbound, well, northbound off-ramp, northbound on-ramp, to move it further to the west to allow for the stacking that's going on. I know you've heard from me on numerous occasions about the lights being thrown off there and what goes on at Bear Valley Road. As much as Nisqually should have relieved some of the traffic, and I believe it has, what I'm noticing when I do travel Bear Valley is that there's the stacking that goes on between Mariposa, the light to get on and off the freeway and get up over the freeway to Amargosa is becoming a problem, has been a problem for some time. I'd like us to explore, at least ask the question with Caltrans, if we could look at the realignment of the off-ramp, on-ramp, further to the west, up onto the bridge, so to speak, that we had looked at previously, without the requirement to do away with left turn lanes at Mariposa. I know that we tied the two of them together, which caused the Sperry to vote against it. If we don't have that, I don't think a Sperry ever votes against it. So I'd like us to at least explore that again.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I could have just a moment. We, Brian and I have looked at that. Certainly, I think it's time. I think we have enough information to get that back to the council for a report in the very near future. And regarding your potential absence on the 18th, I know that Mayor Garcia and myself will be unavailable for that meeting. If Councilmember Kennedy is also unavailable, if you end up not being able to make the meeting, we would not have a quorum, as Mayor Pro Tim Cox suggested, which means we can't have a meeting. So something, as soon as you know, it would be helpful, and I'm sure Carol Lee, having done this for a number of years, will be preparing tomorrow to figure out, okay, what do we do with those agenda items that otherwise would have been on the 19th?
Very well, okay. Anyone else?
I just noticed today that a lot of our dead grass is being removed. I don't know if it's a city crew or contractor and replaced with Desert Style Landscaping. Good go. Looking good.
I want to key off, very quickly, off one of Brian's comments. And this is just for everybody. If you're expecting a refund on your tax return, listen up, listen up.
I didn't say I was expecting one.
Don't ask for a check. In this world, this modern world, everybody should have their refunds deposited electronically. There's no ways I'm going to steal a check out of your mailbox, and it's a great way to avoid that risk. Do it. Wouldn't you agree, Brian?
Correct.
Where they've been hacking computers, I'm not sure how you trust the direct deposit.
I have no idea what they do in the basement of that building. Absolutely not.
Or in the rest of the building.
They probably don't either, so, anyway.
Anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.